So I'm gonna call this meeting of the school committee of the Southern Berkshire Regional School District, 1,687 to order, and we are gonna go into executive session right off the bat. Could somebody read that, please?
Motion to go in to executive session pursuant to MGLC 30A, paragraph 21A, to conduct a grievance hearing with SBREA and return to open session.
I second the motion.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Julie, yes?
Yes.
Jim? Miguel? Carl?
Yes.
And Amy?
Yes.
And Arthur, yes. So I'm gonna have to ask you people to leave for a few minutes, and we will bring you back in when we are ready.
All of them.
Everybody has to leave. Moving on, three, approval of school committee minutes from 1,685, June 12, 2025, and 1,686 on June 26, 2025. Do we have any comments, questions?
Just a couple typos.
Okay.
On the first set of minutes, June 12, page five and six, the typo, every time it says gray machiney, it's got grayss, G-R-E-S-S, and I'm sure it's just a typo where the fingers go. So if you go to page five, bottom of page five, or anywhere you see where it says gray machiney, and those two or three motions, it's just grayss. And then on the second set of minutes, on page three, where it makes reference to this upon, I know you want it to say annual, let me find that one. Now my notes are cryptic even for me.
Page three?
Right in the middle, B, at the very, at the very end of that paragraph, MASC, annual membership.
Oh.
Yeah. And, yeah, yes, please.
Wow. I even spelt it wrong.
I know, but, yeah, we don't want that. So annual membership and recommended an ad hoc committee be set up. It just says an ad hoc. I think that's what you want, anyway.
Minor.
That's all I have.
Very special committee.
I was like, look at that twice.
It's gonna be dusty minutes to read, right?
Yeah, right. Yes, that is.
Dusty minutes.
Well, anyway.
Anybody else? Seen none. Vote on the minutes as corrected. Carl? Carl, you there? I'll come back. Kim?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Carl, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yep, now I can. We're voting on the minutes.
I know, yeah, and I'm gonna get it.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any correspondence?
I don't believe so.
Okay. We don't have a student representative, but we do have a student spotlight.
Correct.
All right, I am going to, I don't have the sound from out of the TV for a little loud, I think. So Lyndy Marcel and I created a little video. I'll blame her if you don't like it. It's just a look at Innovation Pathway, so the money, grant might start to come in, so we never start to do some of our upgrades this summer. So this is what it looks like, here we go. Hello? Yeah. Is the computer on? I gotta restart. Is this the same as yesterday? Yeah, now it's different, okay. All right, I'll be over in a few minutes, again. Ah, we could boot up, something new. Hey, Lyndy, what's up?
You got a second? I was hoping you could go over the Innovation Career Pathways project progress and see how we're putting our grant funds together.
Now, that sounds like fun. This is the Bamboo Lab X1C Carbon 3D printer that we were able to get with Innovation Pathway money. We actually have two of them, there's one over here, there's one over there. Eventually, they're gonna go to the back of the room here in E4. The advantage of this, we wanted to do, was to finally move to multi-color 3D printing. So as you can see here, we only have the green in here to start, but there are three other bays here to take the middle roles, and as this begins to print down here, we can see we have a couple of toy boats that we printed, just in green right now because that's the test print.
You.
But once this gets rolling, this will move from one color to the other. The way that works is in the software for Bamboo Lab, there's, when you bring your project in, you can identify different colors. So in the future, once we have all this going, we could say the hall is gonna be green, the cabin's gonna be red, the little smokestack here is gonna be yellow or what have you. So we can do all that right in the software, send over printing, and we will finally have multi-color prints. Probably our biggest venture in terms of learning curve this year will be two new CNC machines. Students can start with inexpensive pieces of wax that they can carve, and then when they have the wax prototype done correctly, they can move to an aluminum block and carve out their piece of aluminum. So this is the carbide 3D from NoMan, drill bits around here, as you can see there, there's only two, there's 12 different bit sizes that we can pull from. So another upgrade to our classroom here in the maker space is our new hardware for flight simulation. This will be a cornerstone of the aerospace engineering class, and we have our four new Flight Sim yoke and pedal setups from Turtle Beach, the premier partner of Xbox, so kids will be learning on an Xbox. They will have full control of pitch and roll and yaw with the rudders. They have very tactile throttle propeller mixture here for larger plane, we have four engine throttle right here. Excellent way for kids to learn how to fly airplane. We know that we are short on airplane pilots, air traffic controllers. So now we're gonna move on to the biggest portion of these projects for the summer, and that's the overhaul of the TV studio. We wanted to convert the front part to our new electro-vehicle garage space, we have the double doors here, and the back half will continue to be the morning show of the TV studio. And Lyndy, you used to be the morning weather person way back when I used to run the morning show, and you were a student. We're doing things a little bit differently than the old blue screen chroma kit, let's take a look. We have now have this large screen TV here, and the TV studio is a touchscreen, we've got radar going here, so the kids in the morning show now can talk a lot more today, they can appear, they can zoom in on location, they can zoom out, they can go set in two hour radar, they can go to lock and look, and you wait here right from the TV screen.
Match them all.
They can zoom in, they can scroll. What you see before you, there's a nice entry valve studio camera, it's got the hood behind you for the camera person to be able to get a good look at the screen. It is a 4K camera, it's from Black Magic Design, they are the premier company for high-quality, lower-cost video production equipment. They have the market very much cornered for schools and churches and synagogues and nonprofit organizations, very high-quality camera, the latest and greatest. And now we'll talk about the overhaul of the front half of the TV studio, again, double doors were necessary for us to bring the go-kart and the new Electrothon vehicle in and out, we need double doors to do that, they're too light for a single door. This is the new car that we're gonna be working on this first semester, the Electrothon vehicle. When you register for Electrothon, you get a number, we are number 57, and that is our new banner, that is up here. We're trying to decorate this out so it looks like a real garage for those kinds of kids that are into that sort of thing. We've got some more decorations coming for the walls and whatnot, some EV parking stickers and race car parking only stickers. Here's some pictures of the kids from two years ago that started this program, there's one, two, three done there, and there is this past year's group, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight of them. So this is a STEM class, I know by that, that's more than double the number of kids from one year to the next. Battery charging all along this wall right here, tools are gonna be in the Husky over here, pegboard and so on. This is the main work table here, again, this is all Innovation Pathway money. Underneath, we've got parts of the car in here, main frame of the car. Over here on the wire shelves will be just a mixture of storage as we need it. We've got some kits that will be developing kids' electrical knowledge, green energy knowledge, storing our race helmets, the race helmets are all blue, so some kids try to put their personal touch to it. This kid called himself impression leader, that wasn't true, he was very smart. This kid, I think, was the youngest kid in the group of freshmen, so he called himself Bob, maybe on board. Those kinds of things, give them a little chance to have some fun with that and give themselves some personality. On either here, we have a solar generator, there is a solar panel here, fold, and can fold out and start charging that generator, and then turn that generator can charge the go-kart when we can bring the batteries back in using devices like this kilowatt meter here, where it can tell us how much energy we put back into the battery. So now we're gonna start understanding our energy usage, energy consumption, energy creation, start equating into carbon footprint and so on and so forth.
This is also great. Where is the go-kart, how about?
Time they came by and took her for a spin. All right, that's it, I'm gonna go back and make some more flight simulator.
Didn't you have something to do for Beth with her computer?
Yeah, she can wait.
There you go.
What a comedian. No wonder you didn't want me to help with the video.
Chris, if we wanted access to this, we wanted to show it to someone in the community, how would we be able to?
I could share it with you, I could, you know, put it in Google Drive or something and share it with you, it's fine.
I think we should put it up on our Innovation Pathways.
How do we get the morning show in the district office? Do we need a special TV?
Morning show is on channel seven.
Oh.
Yeah, it should take over your clock, your clock should come down, but if you're on channel eight, that's also a clock, and that you may get on the wrong channel.
So we don't, we don't have a clock, do we?
Well, every room's got cable TV access, so maybe it's not the TV in that one.
Yeah, we should get one, because I think that would be really cool to have it in the district office.
Yeah.
Okay. What grades have access to all of this great new stuff?
Primarily high school, yeah, I mean, there's, there are some Innovation Pathway stuff coming in that, you know, for robotics and things like that, where it may spill over into the after-school stuff with the middle schoolers, but primarily what's happening during the school day, maker space, and now the new EV garage will be high school.
Yeah, no, I was thinking about the automation, like for learning to fly an airplane or something. I wondered if middle schoolers have access to that.
In the, what we've done a little bit with the drone team is sometimes, depending on the kids and where they have to be and what they're working on, we might, at the end of a drone session, we might say, there's 15 minutes till the four o'clock plus, if we got to dump the drones, you wanna hop on the flights and you can go ahead and do that.
Okay.
There are some opportunities like that.
Okay.
If we wind up participating at Shaquille O'Neal celebration in September, this would be incredible.
Yeah.
To be able to show to the hundreds of people who show up.
You can do that?
Oh, that's a good idea, yeah.
Yeah, that's an awesome idea. We have multiple, I mean, we have multiple videos.
Yeah.
If we have that.
We could bring the go-kart.
Do you want me to find out about registering, because I got a notice already for us this September.
This is cool, usually have, when you get like a vendor booth and then you can demo whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll get to it.
Someone brought in the form to the office, so.
Oh, they did, so it's.
No, no, I'm saying, somebody, one of you last year brought in the form.
Yeah, me.
Okay, so if you do that, well.
What's the date of that?
It's, it's the Saturday after.
After Labor Day.
That's what I remember, okay.
Yeah, and so many people on, a number of people came.
Yeah, you had a great photo last year for it.
Yeah, I mean, this is wonderful, this, this is what career opportunities are really about.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it'll make people smile.
And it would be great to have some paper support to show what we look at as creative prep.
Yeah, absolutely.
Chris, you have to change your wardrobe.
What's that?
You have to change your wardrobe, you're wearing the identical thing.
We wore that earlier today.
You whipped it up.
Yeah, there's, I mean, we could, maybe we could bring like the flight sim setup over to the pavilion, with power there, like, there wouldn't be maybe internet, but we could probably work without that, I think.
You have to be careful, because last year we got caught in the rain because we were in the corner.
Yeah.
We were exposed last year, so if you, if you had that, you wouldn't want it, you would wanna be in the interior.
It'd be a great idea to make little 3D models and sell them as a fundraiser.
The one thing I didn't mention in the video, I tried to, and it's got kind of long bells to say now, in that, the newest Microsoft flight simulation, the 2024 version, is really quite incredible in that the, they have a career mode now, so kids can take on a career as a commercial airline pilot, or FedEx cargo, or search and rescue, or tourists, you know, plane.
And how do they get access to that?
Well, in the class, they'll get access to that in class, but there's.
Why don't go back to 11, 10 to 11 is great.
And the newest one, they have, Microsoft Flight Simulator has real-time weather and real-time traffic, so planes in the area will kind of get absorbed into your game, and then once they're in the game, they're game objects that you can, you know, play the flying by school, you can fly by that in the game. They have air traffic control, stop and leave and stuff like that, so. There's a whole, there's a whole community that getting exposed to, there's actually people that will be online doing flight control in the SIM environment for you, if you wanna connect with them.
Wow. That's awesome.
It's pretty incredible.
Beth, you sure you don't wanna change your mind?
Of course I do.
Thank you.
It's not too late, though.
Yeah, it's very much too late.
It's tempting, right, tempting? Very tempting. He still won't let me drive the car, saying, he's saying.
Chris, can we talk?
Chris, come on, we need a little help here, Chris.
Who was driving the car?
A student.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much.
There's a, there's a longer, that was her final exam, she didn't do that today, that was, we got to her final exam, it was, she had a long one for her exam, I said, here's the attachment for your phone to the go-kart, your job is a final video project, go record yourself driving around.
We should get the eagle on. I think you need to show Mr. Boyd this.
I'm sorry?
You need to show Mr. Boyd this, who always admires Mount Everest's work.
Public comment.
I've been attending meetings with representative of the select boards of the other five towns as well, and there's a lot of noise about whether or not the money that we spend on our education, that you're responsible for, is being spent properly and is properly controlled. And I know you, you have a difficult, difficult job to do, and, but essentially, the conversation went, well, how can we know whether or not everything is under control? And the answer was, well, there should be an audit, or we should review the audit. We looked over your budget, and there's an annual $22,000 line item for, for an audit. And it turns out there is an annual audit every year, and so we asked for a copy, and I read through the 70-page audit from the most recent one. And everything, as far as accounting controls, are, are, every, I is dotted and T is crossed, everything is fine. The one thing that I found in the audit that was a concern was towards the end, there's a report from Scanlon Associates, the auditors, about the report on internal control over financial reporting. And I'll read from, right out of the audit, it's, I think it's page 55 of the audit. "To the annual school committee, we have audited in accordance with auditing standards of generally accepted in the United States of America and the standards applicable to financial audits of the government order accounting standards issued by the Control General of the United States, the financial statements of the government activities at each major fund, and the aggregate remaining funded information of the Southern Berkshire Regional School District as of for the year ending June 30, 2023." This is the latest audit. "In related notes in the financial statements, while collectively compromise the Southern Berkshire Regional School District's basic financial statements, issued our report thereon on February 10, 2025. Report on internal control of financial reporting, this is what concerns us, in planning and performing our audit of the financial statements, we consider the Southern Berkshire Regional School District's internal control over financial reporting, internal control is a basis for designing audit procedures that are appropriate in the circumstances for the purpose of expressing our opinions on the financial statements, but not for the purpose of expressing an opinion on the effectiveness of Southern Berkshire Regional School District's internal control. Accordingly, we do not express an opinion on the effectiveness of Southern Berkshire Regional School District's internal control. We find, I find that statement upsetting. Then they go on to explain what a deficiency might be, and then they go on to say that they did not look for any deficiencies. They may, I would recommend, I would ask that you recommend that the audit include a review of financial controls of the Southern Berkshire Regional School District. If there are findings, if there are no findings, that's wonderful. If there are findings, all that means is that things need to be remediated and, and made better. I can't see a reason not to, not to review financial controls and have the auditors do that. And since we're currently in the middle of an audit, I don't know whose responsibility it is other than the finance committee, but I would, I would ask, if we're using Scanlon Associates again, to ask what it would take to also review the financial controls that we have for the Southern Berkshire Regional School District. That's my request.
Okay, thank you.
It's not an accusation, it's, it's a request to review. Only good things can come of it.
Yeah. Neither public comment, seen none. Business managers report.
Good evening, seeking approval for the July 4th, 2025, we don't want to report.
Approve you to approve.
Seen none. Carl?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Miguel? Arthur, yes. Is there any grants, gifts, or budget transfers?
I have a question.
Thank you. Chairmen's report. Well, tonight, as we all know, it's Beth's last official school committee meeting, and I just wanna thank her for putting the district in the direction that it's wonderfully going, and for the budgets that, the whole time that she's been here, have been some of the lowest, and I've been on the school committee for roughly 16 to 18 years. So having no budget issues, putting the school district on the map, she's done an incredible job, and I really hate to see her go, but she's going, so.
Thank you, that's very nice.
Welcome to your new endeavor.
Thank you, yeah.
And, oh, by the way, when you leave, you do get to take your name.
Oh, wonderful, in case I forget what my name is. Because I'm so tired, thank you, yeah. Thank you.
I would put it right over your bathroom mirror. After eight years, that's what we're giving you.
Thank you.
I'm shy. There's also cake.
There is cake, which I'm excited, yes.
There's cake and water and coffee after.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, what you've done has been remarkable. Please let us know.
Superintendent's report.
Okay, so, speaking of that, so we're really actively working through the transition for next year. So I had also accepted Julie Dolan's notice, Chris and I are taking it for the team tonight as administration, because everybody's at their conferences, so while they're learning and, and spending time together, Julie had, is retiring at the same time, around August 15, and we are in the process of assembling a committee to begin interviews for that position starting next week. We had a fairly large applicant pool that we are going through, and we will be doing interviews first round next week. And it's made up of faculty and staff, administration, central office at this point for the first round. So that is happening. We had, I had my last board of directors meeting for the Mass Association of Regional Schools. I had to tell them that even though this is an issue near and dear to my heart, I will be on the way opposite end of a rural regional school. So they will be finding a new board of director for the fall. There was a tremendous amount of concern, and I promised that I would come here and ask for the committee to really pay attention, because you don't have a direct representative on the board anymore. But this is a really critical time for rural and regional schools in our state. So there was a big discussion about the, maybe doing a collective response from all the regional and rural school districts as a result of the final budget. They felt very strongly that we had done a really big push across the state, and I know Nancy and Bonnie were on a committee with, through MASC and MAS and Mars and all groups to really advocate for additional funding for rural schools, regional schools. And even though we did that, many people feel like the door was slammed on us with a very significant cut in rural aid. So they're very concerned, they think one of the actions that groups should take individually is to quantify specifically what that means to each district and put it together in a, in a document for legislators. I think that's something that I hope this group will continue to work towards. Also, they want to highlight the fact that just because they made increases to transportation and circuit breaker, that is not necessarily mitigating the funding issues that are happening for rural schools. For us, yes, an increase in circuit breaker is helpful to offset some special education costs, but we do most of ours in-house, so it's not helping in any way, we're not benefiting from, you know, extraordinary relief in that way. So we wanna really, and I would argue it's better for our students to be in the district where they reside, if possible. So I think that's an area that we should pay attention, and there's grave concerns about the funding review formula study group, and I think anybody and anybody who has a passion for it should try to be a part of it. They are very concerned that it's going to turn out like it did last time with very little to no change or real acknowledgement at the rural and regional school level. So I promised I would bring that back. Also, on a really exciting note, I was interviewed by Sean Rubin, who is the executive director of the Throughline Learning Organization. He is doing, his organization is doing a series of conversations, 100 districts, Conversations is what it's called. You can see his organization through LinkedIn, or that's where he's doing a lot, but the goal is that in these challenging times, they are looking to superintendents and districts who are doing incredibly challenging work in really difficult political times, and doing, supporting kids and developing educators and trying to stay sustainable in today's world. And he, they're trying to elevate the stories of districts and, so that we can all learn from each other and highlight. So, of course, I got all excited and told him everything that I could possibly think of, of all the things that we've been doing over the year, and now we are going to be featured as one of the top 100 districts in the country, so. So, um, he had goosebumps, that's on, like, his quotes, and, um, so I think, uh, we're going to be doing a feature piece. And also, I was already, um, speaking on behalf of the work that we've done with Transcend, uh, in the fall. And I will, um, still be, uh, so he had room on his panel, um, highlighting one of these districts. And he said, would you join our panel also while you're there? So, I will be featuring you, even though I'm not with you. Um, I will be with you in spirit, um, talking about all the things that we've done to, um, keep this district sustainable and on the map and, um, moving forward in these times. So, I thought that was a pretty exciting experience. And when it comes out, no matter when that is, I will forward it to all of you so that, um, it can be, uh, shared widely.
So, questions, where, probably where is, will that be viewed as?
So, right now, where I saw, I, I actually, I think he found me because one of my colleagues, uh, from Rhode Island was featured on LinkedIn or something, and so I just happened to, um, you know, like her presentation because I knew she worked hard on it, and, um, uh, I've, I've been, she's in my Leading Now cohort. That's the national political, um, group that, uh, superintendents are in across the, um, nation. And I guess he goes through and sees, you know, they look, the, the organization looks and researches your district. He knew an awful lot. He had read our Strategy for Continuous Improvement. He had, uh, read our, all of our Transcend webpage. He had read, um, he knew, um, he knew about our innovation pathways. But he, you know, really talking through all the different opportunities and the ways that we have given, you know, um, the pedagogy, uh, for early college and how our, our teachers are trained in that. What, how have we given our staff a leg up, even in these challenging times, you know? So, he was so interested in that and the fact that we could, this is something that could be replicated across the country. Um, and those are the ideas that they're trying to elevate and, and share with others.
Give us the connection. The other thing is that you mentioned about, they want to see from individual districts what the impact of all these cuts.
Right, that was right.
So that you're going, who would, you know, if we wanted, especially with our, our committee, to be able to pursue that, how can we do that?
Well, you're going to have to work with, you know, your, the business office and, and to support you and, and whomever. I will talk to whomever is appointed in the interim about, um, continuing this work and, and doing some analysis on that. But, um, but I'm just saying, you know, that's something I think that you guys, um, as you're working with your advocacy groups, you're going to be asked, so you'll have to work with.
That's why we need the info.
So, um, the one that I'm wondering about, um, who are the study groups during the funding review?
I don't know that they've identified it. It just got passed, and so they're gonna, they're going to identify that.
Okay.
Yeah, at the state level, people will be appointed, you know, but I'm saying, the organizations that were pushing for this, which.
MAS, you write the.
You're going to hear, I'm sure people will be asked to support that work.
Great.
That's it for now.
Okay. And no director, director of curriculum?
You won't have anybody else tonight.
Okay.
Except us.
Except us.
Yeah.
There we go.
I mean, no other additional reports.
So, new business vote to appoint interim superintendent pending successful contract negotiations. But, um, I'm asking to table that tonight because we are still looking at the references from all three people. So, we are going to have to continue this next week. We'll have to figure out the date before the end of the school meeting.
So I. Do you need a motion to table?
I need a motion to table.
Move to table, item, vote, uh, in, under new business vote to appoint interim superintendent.
Second.
Okay, Bonnie?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Jim? Miguel?
Yes.
Kim?
I'm here.
Oh, yeah.
Carl?
Yes.
And Arthur, yes. Thank you. Um, proposed meeting schedule for '26 school year.
You guys can take that home view. Double-check that those dates work for you. They're in purple on the calendar. And then we can discuss it at the next meeting.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
Okay?
Yep.
Before we move on to calendar, can we just talk about August? Like, when is the beginning of school? Are there times that school 27 is expected at the beginning of school to be showing up to do stuff?
Want me to say what I would say, or do you want?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I just, I feel like, uh, you know, I've got invited to something, even a community thing.
I would assume that you.
What would he be invited to?
You would be invited to convocation, um, uh, on the first day of school, so they're putting that. So, we have, I should have also said that, um, Monday, we have, uh.
August 25th.
August 25th. You'll get an actual invitation, though, to what that day looks like.
No, I'm just getting some August dates, filling in my calendar, but I'm trying to hold.
Yeah, right.
I know that I'm supposed to be doing something, but I just don't know what and when.
Yeah, so that would be, um, so those days prior to the opening of school, um, will be scheduled. And, uh, we usually have an opening day speaker that we invite the school committee to, convocation, obviously, and welcome back. So, the administrative team will be having the, uh, full-day retreat on Monday and shoring up a lot of the schedules and activities and all of that. So, you'll get that.
This coming Monday.
This coming Monday, yes.
Oh, okay.
Um, so that's part of that.
Dates.
Correct. Perfect. Okay, that's all. It will definitely take a lot of time.
Is definitely the 25th of August.
Yes, okay. Right now, that's what it is.
All right.
Um, I would also, just looking at this cursorily, I would, I would move, I would try to move, if possible, the budget, the first, the, where it says the 12th, I would try to move it to the 5th.
The 12th of what?
March. Just looking at the dates.
Oh, move, move it to March 5th?
Uh, yeah, if possible. And you're going to, you're going to need them back to back, so I would go 5th. And you will still need one on the 12th. You need them a week apart.
Okay.
But you definitely want the first one on the 5th.
Okay, so just.
It's too late to be that second, the, the one on the.
Oh, yeah, to get before the first school.
So you're going to need the 5th and the 12th, and then.
For sure.
Then you're good, okay? Right. I mean, if you really want to get wild and meet again, okay, but I'm just saying.
You can hope not.
Yeah.
It's getting old.
That's the only, that's the only one that I can, I can see right now, but.
What I can do is I can revise it and send it all out to you guys.
Okay.
You could do that.
And then, um, and then we, town meeting, 10th, then probably be that second week of May, so we need to be there.
Yeah, it's more, it's, it's more when you have to get the warrant articles out, so that's why you have to be the 5th and the 12th. I would say no later because it starts to push against that 45 days for Monterey.
Okay.
And Monterey is the Saturday, right?
They're the first.
So it would be May 2nd?
I believe so.
Yeah. Okay.
So if you did that count back, that's why I would do as early as you can in May. I mean, March, excuse me, my goodness. I also will put in a little bit of a plug that I, I, I think the Strategy for Continuous Improvement will be done. I plan to go over where we are with the interim, but I think it would be good if the school committee and the incoming superintendent and maybe members of the community take a look at that as well. So I think that could be an activity if the committee is willing to come earlier in the year and have more eyes on the direction.
Okay. Are we ready? Julie, you all set? Okay. Uh, unfinished business. Do we have any?
I don't think so, right?
Nope. Subcommittee reports, finance, I don't have anything.
Evaluation, so I don't have anything.
Policy. Carl, we have that.
Uh, well, we, we, I think we agreed, and we've said this several times, that, uh, in this, uh, quite busy time with some major things on, on our calendar, we, we are, uh, putting, uh, a continued discussion, uh, on, on policy, on, on whole, not a very long whole, but, uh, we get, uh, we have to get through our, our negotiations with, uh, with the union and our appointments of an interim superintendent. And once those two things are out of the way, and hopefully that'll be relatively soon, we'll start again with Liz LeFond discussing winding up the, uh, the policy discussions. That's it.
Thank you.
Where we are, where we are, we're in a, we're in a whole, hopefully relatively short.
Thank you. Personnel negotiations, Bonnie.
After a delightful nine-hour-plus meeting this past Tuesday, um, after Beth, Josh, and I speak tomorrow, we hope to have a, um, positive statement. It was agreed between the union and the district that nobody would make any statements until it was agreed to by both. So, I'm not being, but it was a long one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you.
Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee, Kim?
See, that's fine.
I think she's gone.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, she's on, I bet. Oh, go ahead. No, actually.
There she is. Or not. Okay, moving on, because there's nothing going on there. Executive Minutes Review.
Uh, that, that's me, and, and, uh, again, the same as, as last time, when we get through, uh, these more pressing matters, uh, we will, uh, consider the, uh, the very few remaining executive minutes that have not been considered and either, uh, kept, kept as, as, uh, closed minutes or released. Uh, but that's, that's not going to happen, uh, for certainly another month and a half or so.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Doc, interim superintendent search, that's, uh, it is going on. We had three candidates that we interviewed, and we're in the process of working on it. Future agenda items. Okay. Executive session, but before we do that, do we want to take a short break and have cupcakes and celebrate breath while everybody's here? Because when we come back, nobody will be here.
Might as well get some frosting on your face.
Yeah, that's right.
Michelle, do you have what I need for that?
No.
Um, okay, no, but we can make that happen.
Yeah.
I don't know if you need a whole lot, but we'll talk about it. Let me tell you what you want.
Okay, well, we're, we're taking this little break.
Carl and Kim, we're going to use the same, uh, executive session link that you used for earlier this, this evening.
Okay, so that's, it's the same one, correct?
It's the same link you used before.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. We'll see you soon. Do we need to take a motion?
Yes, right?
Motion to go into.
You have to, someone has to read the motion for, oh, hold on.
No, we're not doing that yet. We're taking a break so we can have cupcakes and celebrate Beth while everybody's here.
We're taking a break so we can have cupcakes.
Do you, do you want to do the calendar? Do you want to try to pick a date? Do you want to, while they're.
Do that first while everybody's thinking about it?
Okay, let's, uh.
Recording in progress.
Pick a date for next week for working on.
Well, both, um, Carl and, and Kim.
Left.
Left.
Well, then we'll have to do it after.
After.
We'll tell them afterwards. We're on executive side.
Calendar.